We begin our meeting if we could start the introductory video. I'd like to call the October 20, 2020, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to order. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we hold our commission meeting this evening, the election process is now underway in our community and across North Carolina. Regardless of where we may fall on the political spectrum, our nation's long history of democratic elections is something we all hold sacred. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let us take a moment to remember the many people throughout our country's history who have fought for and sacrificed to help establish and defend our democratic freedoms, including members of the armed services, as well as the many people who have worked hard to expand the right to vote to all the citizens in our country regardless of their level of wealth, their gender, or their race. Please join us in a moment of silence to acknowledge and remember the many Americans who have helped earn the right to vote that we enjoy today. Thank you. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the board at this meeting. We now come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any commissioners about any item on the consent agenda?
I just have a comment, Chairman, for the board on within the consent agenda is the Ink High School barn project. And I want to bring good news to the board that after our meeting, it was either a day or two after that, a pledge of $30,000 came in for that barn, and the board graciously agreed $15,000. I think somebody did a match. And so there was a pledge that they let me know about. And so I thought I'd let you guys know because that was a concern. So that's been alleviated.
It's great news. Great news. Thank you for sharing it. Commissioners, we need to add the right-of-way on Jacob Home Way, which we discussed in our briefing meeting earlier today. So without objection, we will add that to new businesses, new business to address this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the agenda as published with the addition of the Jacob Home Way right-of-way?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. At 5:15, we do have several members of the public who wish to comment. We have an update from Mr. Warren. Would you be willing to get started on that? Or how long do you anticipate that item might take? We could start it and then take a break and come back to it. We're still figuring out how to fit this public comment in in the way that works for everything.
Yeah, we can run through this. No problem.
And if it goes a little bit later, we'll...
Max? Start me off. All right. Good evening. I'm here to give you the fourth quarter financial update. This is, of course, unaudited because we're still in the process of the 2020 audit, which we will be wrapping up very shortly. So we're going to go through the general fund, budget to actual, the expenses, and then run through solid waste, revenues, and their expenses as well. So how'd we do? Well, if you look at the graph, you can see for revenues by type, everything came in just about budget. We finished at 100.2% of budget. So total budget was $393,466,352. We had appropriated fund balance. So once we removed that, the actual revenues were $378,674,048. And then the actual year-to-date was $379,570,22. So what drove us over? As you can see, we had permits and fees came in above budget, $694,000. Investment earnings also were doing really well until COVID. So don't expect to see that moving forward for any time soon. Restricted under governmental, which came in $472,000 over. That was really the net difference of coronavirus relief funds and then a decrease in social work, child support, income maintenance, and foster care revenues. Sales and services came in at $307,000 above budget. That was really the net difference for federal prisoners, Medicaid cost settlement, and the decrease in ambulance fees, elections, and rental income. Other taxes came in at $387,000 above budget. And that was excise tax, rental car gross receipts, heavy equipment rentals that were higher than what we anticipated. Miscellaneous revenue came in at $297,000 above, net difference of higher-than-anticipated interest on the advow taxes, program revenue, and decrease in miscellaneous grant and sale of asset revenue. Advow taxes actually came in slightly above budget, $173,147. So the big question is, how did sales tax do? We were anticipating it to really drop off as a result of all the shutdowns. Happy to say it was only 3.2% lower than budget. So it was down $1,064,781. And then our inter-fund transfers, these are transfers that we do from other funds. So 480 is the health insurance fund, and 225 is the registered deed server indirect charge fund. We didn't do the transfer from 480, and we did a reduced transfer from 225 due to their charges being charged directly to that fund. Is there any questions on the revenue? All right. So the expenditure side, we did well here. Total budget was $393 million. Total actual was $376,736,865, or 95.75% of budget. As you can see, every category came in under budget. Looking at it in the other format, which is by category, so that's your sales, services, operating expenditures, program support, you can see how the expenditures came in compared to the budget for those categories. So the primary drivers for those was operating, was down $8.5 million. The bulk of that was a result of travel and training, office expenses, maintenance and repair contracts. And a lot of that is due to the shutdown. People weren't traveling from the county. Offices were closed, so we didn't have as much office expense, utilities, that sort of stuff. Benefits also came in under budget, and a lot of that is due to vacant positions in the detention center, social services, IT, public health. And then our program support was down $3.7 million. And that was unspent funds across the economic development, DSS and pre-K. Now, the economic development piece, $1.8 million. Those incentives are being carried over into fiscal year '21. And then we also are carrying over $448,000 in operating and some additional program support for a total carryover of $2.5 million. Solid waste fund. Solid wasted, excuse me. Solid waste did really well. Total amended budget with appropriated fund balance was $10.2 million. Total amended budget without the appropriated fund balance was $9.6 million. Total actual year-to-date was $11,452,808. So they came in at 118.7% of budget. And that was their sales and service. And that's really the net difference between higher-than-anticipated disposal fees at the transfer stations combined with the lower-than-anticipated disposal fees at the landfill.
And is that because everyone, you know, everyone was at home this year, so everyone cleaned out their houses and stuff?
Miscellaneous revenue came in higher with renewable energy credits, and there was a settlement from Wiseman. Investment earnings were doing well. They were $139,000 over. And then other taxes and liasses, which is the scrap tires, white goods, those sort of things, came in higher. On the expenditure side, $10.2 million budgeted. Total actual is $8.6. They spent 84.5% of budget. As you can see, operating expenditures were way down. Salaries were up, higher than budget. And capital outlay was lower. The operating was a reduction due to maintenance and repairs at the landfill and at transfer station. They had some contracts and professional services that came in under, and then their vehicle expense and equipment rentals were lower. The capital outlay was for the brake trailer and some garage improvements that didn't get done, and those were carried forward to fiscal year '21. Any questions on how we did for fiscal year '20?
Looks like great job to me. I appreciate it.
I don't see any other questions right now. Thank you for the update.
Sure.
And we'll roll right into the public comments then. Thank you so much.
And I still have first quarter to do as well.
Okay, so we'll bring you back for first quarter.
Unless you want me to do it real quick right now.
Let's do public comments. I'm sorry to break it up into two parts, but let's...
For you, it's okay.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating us. All right. Lamar, can you remind us the process we're going to use this evening?
We have the same basic process. The bottom line, you're going to have a one-way communication where you will be a live commenter. You won't be able to ask questions.
You can start now.
Hi. My name is Benjamin Harvey. I'm an Asheville resident. I live in Bent Creek, which I believe is south Asheville. I'm presenting today about three resolutions that I'm going to put forward and the county school board. I know that county commission doesn't exactly have the same jurisdiction or reciprocity over school decisions as the board, but I still feel it's important to talk. For too long, students have been told to deal with the reality of the pandemic. And while it's something that can't be tackled individually, if we're forced to treat this like a collective issue, have we not forced this upon unwanted persons? There's no surefire way to judge who's been affected more by the pandemic, and neither should there be. However, the reality is that at different levels, it's affected families, and those different levels will never be clear. Sadly, there's a unilateral understanding for how grades are to be weighted, but no understanding for the quality of life from student to student. This concept is applicable to teachers as well. In a sense, students and teachers have been left to the wolves to solve issues with grades, absence, performance, because the county school board has made no impactful measure to account for how students are variously affected. Who was supposed to prepare us for adult life and for the continuation of our education? But the school system itself is creating a stark contrast to ideals we're supposed to commend in our life when we are prepared by them to be adults. It presents a lack of perspective, especially for the institution supposed to teach us. And if this model is setting us up for our future, a grim outcome seems almost forthcoming. What message does the school board send when they treat us all as if nothing has happened and as if over 200,000 aren't dead? What message does it show when the board sends the exact same workload on all students knowing the unproportional effects of the virus? What message does it send when it's made opaquely clear that students who don't have the same family lives or stable incomes are far less likely to succeed than those who are well off? It's as if they don't realize wealth disparity between students was not already a challenge for the school system before the pandemic exacerbated it. The school board was right in one consideration of grade weighting, and that's the treatment of all students should be equitable across the board. But there's been no room made for the obvious decline in students' ability to learn and teachers' ability to teach. What we're proposing is that at the end of the semester, only 75% of busy work is to be actually put into the grade book. This does not include quizzes, tests, and projects. This does not mean that students are not supposed to be 75% of their work. It means that at the end of the semester, 25% of busy work assignments that are either the student's choice or the grades that most dramatically decrease their grade are to be expunged from the grade book. We propose that instead of teachers having different forms of determining when assignments are late, all assignments from that week are to be turned in on that corresponding Sunday. And to compensate for the workload, teachers have a two-week extended grading period to complete their grading. Finally, we propose that attached to the grade determined by a student teacher, there's an optional 0 to 10 points that can be added to a student's grade. This is given and determined by the teacher.
Your time's up, Benjamin.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe we have a couple more.
All right. This is Don Yellin from Jupiter, North Carolina. And you'll have to just put that ring in the background because that goes on all the time. But I wanted to say something that is very, very positive. Don, you did a great job on putting that money out on the way you handled it and put it in the agenda. And Avril, if you had a hand in that, I appreciate it because that's the best job I've seen of explaining the numbers. And I had a little bit of time to look at it. And one of the things that I did see that I wanted to point out is based on the estimated for this first quarter, our debt service is going to increase about 5% next year. And I think, Commissioners, you need to keep that in mind because that is a problem that we're going to have is debt service. As we very well know, we can print money, but every time you print money, the value of it goes down. Also, I understand you were talking about whether something could be a tax deduction that was given to the county. Well, I think that I'm going to request, Avril, that you get a legal determination because if I suppose that I wanted to give something to the county, it should be a tax write-off. And that's a way to bypass the nonprofits, which also have to have administration so the money would go directly to the point of purpose of where it's needed. All you commissioners, think about that. Public housing, yeah, it's going to be there. But there's one thing I do want. I want an account of all discounts public housing gets. I know they get a discount in the sewer and water tap. I know they get discount in loans. I know they get discounts in other things. And I think we, as citizens who are paying the bill, need to know what has been given in each of those homes that are built. Okay? Now, that'll probably fall on deaf ears, but I will be here. I don't care if I have to call in or jump up and down or stand on the corner and say it because that is true. Now, my next question is, why not? Hold people that want to make a public comment in that holding area where you kept us one time and then bring us in? Because you all have all the staff in there. And you see them in the pre-meeting. So they can come in, do their speech, and leave, and then you could have comments. Because how can I make a comment on a public hearing and I have to call in or you have to call me? You cannot make a comment on a public hearing at the time of the public hearing, and I think that is very, very bad. And in closing, for a positive note, I just checked the numbers that you were getting. And it's amazing because when you look at it, the death rate in Buncombe County is .039%. Not .3%, not three tenths of a percent, but .039. And the number of people that have had it is 1.4%.
Okay. Hello, my name is Susan Bridgers, one of your District 3 constituents and a serious voter. I live in the Anka Hills neighborhood of 50 single-family homes near Sand Hill and Sardis Roads intersection. From my front porch, I hear the Jacob Home Plant noise because the Anka Commerce Campus property abuts the Anka Hills neighborhood, my neighborhood. This noise has been increasing over the past five and a half years, now around the clock, most every day. The noise produced by Jacob Home Plant affects our quality of life and the values of our property. It sounds like airport jet engines constantly running combined with the beep, beep, beep of alarms going off at the plant and several middle-of-the-night wall-shaking kabooms. I've measured the noise levels heard at my house at 70 and 150 decibels coming from the Jacob Home Plant. One can't hold a phone conversation or record the birds or enjoy reading on the porch, as you might imagine, might be reasonable of an expectation of a homeowner at her own property. That's what it sounds like from my porch. While I've complained and asked for action on this issue in the past several years, both to you, the commissioners, and the plant managers, nothing has been done citing the county noise ordinance exception for commercial entities. And now, though the current plant manager says she is mitigating the noise by virtue of her kind graces, we cannot depend on any adherent to nonexistent law-governing noises in the county. I don't expect her fixes to fully fix the noise issuance from her facility as several slight past attempts have hardly dampened the noise. I worry that the new Hacon plant being built near the Jacob Home Plant will also add to this industrial noise disturbance, further damaging our quality of life and property value. Before the Hacon plant is finished being built and while the Jacob Home is considering their efforts of mitigation, please remove the noise ordinance exception for commercial entities in Buncombe County and then enforce that the businesses of Anka Commerce Campus adhere to the more reasonable noise ordinance rules that you'll put in place for the rest of the time. I ask that Buncombe County Noise Ordinance Exception Number Four, which is the one excluding commercial or industrial enterprises, on this noise code be changed.
Second.
And then, when changed, the noise rules be enforced. I'm available for further consultation to help put this ordinance change in place. Please let me know your thoughts. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Joyner, does that conclude all the public comment?
That should be all the public comments.
That's it. No, he has a thumb up.
Has a thumb and should have a finger.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Warren, you're back up for part two.
All right. Well, this won't be nearly as exciting as the last one. It's the first quarter, you know. Not a whole lot going on, really. All right. First quarter financial update, unaudited, of course. We'll go through the general fund budget to actual summary for expenses, revenues, and we'll go through the solid waste as well. So fiscal year 2021. Total amended budget with appropriated fund balance is $340,445,943. Year-to-date actual is $39,698,335. That's 11.7% of budget. Now, you would expect being one quarter of the way through the year that we would be 25% of budget. But as you all know, that is not the way finances work in government. Revenues come in at various times. Expenditures go out at various times. So hopefully, we get to the end of the year and it's 100%. Expenditures. Budget $340 million. Total actual year-to-date $67,964,611. So we're at about 20% expended. You can see that compared to last year, we're trending about the same. A little bit under on the human services, a little bit over on the education, but not big differences. Looking at expenditure by category, this is salary and benefits. You see the differences between this year and last year. Not significant. Solid waste. Total amended budget is $10,301,080. Total actual is $2,975,561. So they are at 28.9% of their budget already this year. So they're doing really well. The transfer station, of course, is doing better than the landfill. But they just keep doing gangbusters there. Dane's a happy man. Expenditures. $10.3 million budgeted, $1.545,775. 15% expended. You can see, compared to last year, we're just a little bit over compared to last year on operating expenditures. Nothing significant. At this point, there's nothing really to report. Everything looks good for the first quarter. Of course, we will keep an eye on it. We will come back and let you know. And I'll be back with the second quarter report and then give you an update. You have any questions?
Looks good. Thanks.
Don, how far are we down on the sales tax?
I would love to tell you that, but we haven't gotten the sales tax in yet.
We haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
My prediction, though, I don't know. All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
We don't have any public hearings. Ms. Pender, do you have any updates? Right. And under new business, our first item is a resolution declining to lease or purchase a portion of the Emma Elementary School property. And Michael Free will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Max, if you could go ahead and pull up that one slide we have. Emma Elementary School is on 13.71 acres. It's located on a site about one mile straight north behind where you walk into the front of the Sam's Wholesale Club. On this property, I think that north arrow is wrong and is pointing east. And that's why I was having trouble figuring out where it was in the past. No, Aztec Road is correct. So that is correct. This would be on the north part. The area in green there is in the north part of the Emma School property. And as you know, of course, Buncombe County is working hard on early childhood education. It's partnering with Buncombe County Schools. And Werner Center for Early Learning wants to expand operations and cooperations with Buncombe County and Buncombe County Schools by building on a piece of .917 acres, which the school board has already declared as surplus. And they're required by law to officially offer to Buncombe County that property before the schools could enter into a third-party arrangement for lease or sale. Buncombe County Schools is looking at a long-term lease of that just-under-acre property to build a 39,928-square-foot facility. And the request from Buncombe County Schools is that this board officially consent to that and enter into a resolution allowing them to do so.
All right. Thank you.
So moved? Second.
So this is in support of the resolution in the packet, right?
Yes, sir. All right. There's a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is discussion of the FY21 Affordable Housing Services Program Applications, Allocations, and Associated Budget Amendments. And Matt Cable, Planning Manager, will explain this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the information to the board on the FY21 Affordable Housing Services Program Applications, the allocations that were recommended by the Affordable Housing Committee, and the associated budget amendments necessary to allocate those funds. The Affordable Housing Services Program has a long history here in the county and has been in place since fiscal year 2004. The county, in addition to regular allocations of funding for the program, began in about 2011, receiving requests for some larger funding of larger-scale construction projects. And over that period from 2011 until 2019, an additional $8.9 million in funding was requested and awarded to support four significant construction projects here in the county. The Board of Commissioners acted in fiscal year 2019 to create an Affordable Housing Committee, which is a subcommittee of the full board. Committee, which is a subcommittee of the full board, the purposes of which were to monitor and assist with increased regular allocation of budgeted funds and with the purposes of eliminating those large-scale requests outside of that regular allocation of funding. Tonight's presentation is intended to review the, the actual Affordable Housing Services Program process, how it's working today, the project proposals that were received for the FY21 allocation, and the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations and the work that they've been undertaking over the last fiscal year. The Affordable Housing Committee has worked diligently, as I mentioned, over the last year to develop the FY21 budget for the Affordable Housing Services Program, to revise and update the existing program guidance and program offerings. That was about an eight-month process that was undertaken by the committee, where they went through each and every aspect of the programs that were offered, evaluated those, and made modifications. Those included modifications to what was actually offered in terms of programs available, the requirements for those programs, and terms specifically for the loans, and they dug into those issues very deeply. And then during that same process, they went through a prioritization activity and exercises to help identify which projects were among a priority for the committee and thus for An important point is that there is significant alignment between the Affordable Housing Services Program and the 2025 strategic plan. These processes were running along concurrently, so all of that work that the committee was doing and updating the program guidance ran alongside of the work that the full board was doing on the strategic plan. And so you'll note, if you were to review the full guidance, that a lot of the things that applicants are asked for really reflect a lot of the things you see in the strategic plan. Applicants provide information on the target populations they're serving, on transportation access, on job access, on energy efficiency, and how the efforts of the program are actually impacting the residents. On this slide, as you can see, we've highlighted some of the community focus areas, which really dig into, to housing issues and specific goals and rationales where housing is, is highlighted in the strategic plan. So we expect that there will continue to be clear alignment with, between the Affordable Housing Services Program and the strategic plan, particularly as we move forward into the next fiscal year, and can more fully incorporate those elements into the Affordable Housing Services Program. As I mentioned earlier, the committee did undertake a prioritization process to try to identify which categories within the program were the most important in terms of trying to fund and advance forward during review of project proposals. And you can see here, there were nine prioritized items. The first four are construction-focused, so the impetus here is the development of affordable housing units. So you can see that prioritized in those first four priorities of construction. The fifth is down payment assistance programs, which are loans, again, to support, in this case, single-family unit production and development. Priority six is tenant-based rental assistance, which is a grant program. Priority seven was actually a new subcategory within the program of construction grants, and those were intended for projects which may need assistance in constructing units which wouldn't generate revenue. So, for example, a shelter-type of structure for serving the homeless population may not generate revenue as a traditional affordable housing program, but met that goal of serving the homeless population. So that would be a category that they could seek funding within that program. Emergency repair program grants were the eighth priority, and then the ninth priority were new start program grants. Again, this was a new program with a small cap of $25,000 per applicant, intended to assist organizations out there seeking to start something new or expand and develop a program more broadly, intended to serve affordable housing needs. So the process to date for the current request for proposals, in early August, a notice was provided in the newspaper of the request for proposals, and prior applicants and anyone who had expressed interest in receiving that information was notified directly of the availability of the application window. The application window was open through the majority of August. At the end of August, staff began reviewing the projects, and the Affordable Housing Committee held two consecutive meetings, one at the end of September and then one at the very beginning of October, to review the projects and then make their funding recommendations that would be brought forward to the board at tonight's meeting. The fiscal year 21 Affordable Housing Services Program budget includes a one point, one million eight hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-five-dollar transfer from the general fund, an additional one hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars in prior-year program income, so that is program income collected from loans, loan repayment in the prior year. That would be applied to the FY21 budget, as well as four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in fiscal year eighteen Affordable Housing Services Program permit fee rebates. So there was a balance that was available that was not expended out of that program, which was sunsetted by the committee in a prior year, that remains available and can be used in this year's allocations. A total of one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars are available to apply to the proposals. The request, as is typical, did exceed the amount of available funding. We received five million three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars in total requests via fourteen different applications. There were three applications which were deemed to be ineligible based on not adhering to the program guidance. There were various reasons for that, and the applications, the applicants were communicated with and understood why those ineligible determinations were made. Those included an application from Haywood Street Congregation, as well as two applications for Homeward Bound. With those ineligible applications removed, the ask of the remaining eleven applications were two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars, which still exceeded the amount of available funding. On this slide, you can see, again, the total available funds, the amount of requests. There is an additional internal county program that is being recommended to receive some funding, which is also considered another request from the funds. So the shortfall, the amount of reduction needed in ask versus available funding, was two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. As I highlighted earlier, the committee did prioritize projects, and here is a list of the eligible applications that were received and in which category they fell. So we will review, staff will present to you information on each of these projects in order of priority. So you'll see the most important project according to the committee's priorities and the program priorities first, and working our way through the lowest priority projects.
Before we get started, I want to try to catch you when you took a breath. The forty thousand, that was before, that was a program, you want to comment about that being moved, H R?
Yeah, and I'll highlight that in a little bit more detail when we get to, there's a specific slide on it, and I can go into that in detail and how that program will be a little different from in years past, but largely similar to how it's been funded previously. I will point out, just before we leave this slide, that as I mentioned, there were eleven eligible applicants. Only eight applications received a favorable recommendation from the committee at this point. There will be available funds, and those other applicants are still in consideration for possible funding, but I'll touch on that a little bit more as we get further along in the presentation. This slide provides a summary of the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee. These include a construction loan funding, as well as additional grant funding requests. We'll go through, again, each of these in detail. With this recommendation from the committee, support is being provided to over eight, to eight hundred and ninety-two units or households, and it actually includes supporting construction of eighty-four new units. So we'll talk about each of those and what the impacts are specifically within each The first recommendation, and this one is a little bit more complex than usual, so there will be two slides on this construction loan recommendation, and it's the result of the fact that there have been prior-year awards. But the consideration first by the committee was the ask of funding in the FY21 application. And so this request was for a construction loan by Workforce Homestead Incorporated. The project is Jasper Apartments, which is located in the Swanonoa area. This is a multifamily-for-rent project that includes eighty-four units to be constructed. The total project costs exceed fourteen million, and the applicant has committed funds in the amount of thirteen million six hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, including low-income housing tax credit funding. The request from the applicant was for four hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and twelve dollars in loan, and the committee recommended the full request of the applicant. As is noted in your request for board action, this one, as I mentioned, is a little bit more complex, and the recommendation that came out of the committee is a little bit different, in that this applicant had received a prior-year award through the Affordable Housing Services Program in FY2020. The applicant had also received a home match allocation, because they received home award funds through the city, but that home match was allocated by the board to this project. So in total, the commission with the action tonight and the prior two actions would be allocating three separate allocations to this individual applicant. And the recommendation from the committee and from staff would be to take these three separate allocations and award it as a single award, to reduce complexity. That was actually requested of the applicant. The total loan amount would then be one million sixty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. The provisions of the program allow the county to accept a lower lien position. We wouldn't be the largest loan provider in the portfolio of this project, so they've requested that we accept a second lien position. That's recommended by the committee as well. And the applicant actually requested a deferred interest schedule. So the loan terms, which are allowed by the program and supported by the committee, is a twenty-year loan term with a four point two five percent interest rate. These are interest-only payments with a balloon at the end of the period. The applicant did provide a proposed schedule of repayment that would show when they would make those interest payments. The total repayment on the loan would be one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents, assuming that they were making those interest payments along the way and not paying principal in advance, which would be permitted. So again, the principal on the loan would be one million sixty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and total anticipated interest of nine hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. The next project recommended, and the remaining will be grant-funded, so that's the only loan package, so these will be recommended as awards, as a grant, was for tenant-based rental assistance. This recommendation was to provide funding to the applicant Evelyn Charities. This would support one hundred and four units. The committee recommended funding one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of the three hundred thousand dollar request. This program specifically targets the adult housing assistance need, so typically, other program funds that are available through traditional means, a large pot of this funding comes through DHHS to Evelyn Charities, and they administer that under a contract, but those funds assist individuals with children in the household. This program is specifically targeted for those individuals who do not have children in the household and wouldn't have access to that funding. So again, the recommendation was developed based on prior need that was shown in May through July of this fiscal year and how much they were spending to support those individuals impacted largely by COVID at that point. There was a second tenant-based rental assistance grant. This was from a new applicant that had not been previously funded, and this project applicant was Elida Holmes. This request was, again, for a targeted population, so this is adult housing assistance for individuals without children in the household, but these are young adults transitioning out of Elida's regular housing and into independent housing. And the request here would be to support seven households or individuals at a request of ten thousand fifty dollars. The full amount was recommended by the committee to support that program. And those were the two tenant-based rental assistance applications that were recommended to receive funding. The committee did review, did receive and review a request from Pisgah Legal Services for an expansive program for tenant-based rental assistance. At this point, they didn't bring forward a recommendation on that, but their funding remains available, and that will continue to be considered, how to best achieve general populace needs for tenant-based rental assistance. The next program category for which the committee provided recommendations was in the emergency home repair grant category. There were two applications. The first was from Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity. The recommendation from the committee was to provide two hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars of the originally requested three hundred and six thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. This reduction from the applicant's request to the committee's recommendation was based on the existing waiting list at the time of the application, the goal here being to provide enough allocation to support the known need that existed at the time of application. And that would support forty-one households in terms of emergency repair. The second request for emergency repair was from Mountain Housing Opportunities. The applicant requested three hundred thousand, and the Affordable Housing Committee did recommend the full three hundred thousand. This recommendation would support forty units of emergency repair, and their waiting list actually exceeded the number of applicants they requested support for. However, just to point out, this is a larger program, so the entirety of the program would support the waiting list and additional others, but the county with the known waiting list would be able to support those applicants that were already in line for emergency repair And then the last category were new start program grants, and again, these were, this program is intended for innovative approaches or to create a new program to somehow assist in meeting affordable housing needs here in Buncombe County. The first project applicant was SEMA, and the project was the Poter Emma Home Repair Program. This program would support actual emergency or, or home repairs within units, so the request was for twenty-five thousand dollars to support twenty homes receiving repair at one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per household in repair. The committee did provide a full funding recommendation of twenty-five thousand dollars for this project. This is an innovative approach in that SEMA is a property management and construction cooperative, and they'll be actually going into the homes that are owned cooperatively to make repairs within that development, which is the Sourwood Mobile Home Park. The next new start program grant was for project applicant Elida Holmes. This is an administrative grant request, so those were prioritized lower on the list in terms of funding support, but this is a unique proposal from Elida Holmes. There would be no immediate unit support from this allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is recommended by the committee, but that funding is intended to support other dollars, which Elida Holmes is comprising and pulling together, in order to internally develop plans to construct forty-eight units of housing at its Compton Road site and to secure financing for construction. So this is really funding, from a new start perspective, intended to assist that organization in increasing their capacity to develop and plan for construction on property they already And then finally, the new start program, the last new start program grant, which received favorable recommendation from the committee, was for On Track. On Track, their project is known as the Affordable Housing Stability and Home Ownership Program, and this request was for twenty-five thousand dollars, which would include an investment of basically forty-three dollars per household in an educational program. And what they're working on and plan to use these funds for would be to develop programs specifically targeted at rental households that had received rental assistance as a result of COVID-19 impact. So it's a very specific targeted educational program that would then be available to over five hundred households in the county. five hundred households in the county. There were, and I'll just touch on that briefly, there were two other new start program grant applications, which as of now have not received a favorable recommendation. One was in support of Pisgah Legal's Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, so they actually applied for rental assistance funding with some admin function, but also a new start program to support administrative staffing to get that program off the ground. Again, eligible application has not yet received a recommendation from the committee favorably, and the second was from the Asheville-Buncombe Community Land Trust, and that request was for twenty-five thousand dollars in administrative support for the addition of a part-time position. So again, an eligible application not yet receiving a favorable recommendation at this point in time, but still eligible for further consideration. Finally, to Commissioners Belcher's earlier question, the Employee Housing Assistance Program, which is being modified in the current fiscal year to be referred to as the Employee Housing Assistance Benefit Program, and this is a loan program which has been offered in the past number of years by the county, but is transitioning out of the Affordable Housing Services Program and Management by Planning and Development Staff to the Human Resources Department, so that it can be administered properly as a benefit under North Carolina General Statute Guidance. And the recommendation here is to provide forty thousand dollars in funding, which under current program guidance would support as many as four employees in obtaining loans for down payment assistance or repairs to the home at a cap of ten thousand dollars. That policy would be under review and redevelopment and would be administered by the Human Resources Department, and then the funding for that would be reflected in the budget amendment. So you'll see how that funding would move out of the Affordable Housing Services Program and into Human Resources. So as I mentioned earlier, over one-point-nine million dollars in available funds. The current recommended allocations from the committee include one million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars out of that available budget, which leaves a balance of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which we fully expect to have forthcoming recommendations on. A lot of the reason behind not fully allocating the funding or having a recommendation for that full allocation is continued discussion and ongoing conversation surrounding tenant-based rental assistance needs, particularly in light of COVID-19, and determining how to best allocate those funds, and the committee's continuing that work at a meeting in early And I know this was a lengthy presentation and overview, so as a reminder, the request for board action would be that the board approve the recommended FY 21 Affordable Housing Services Program project proposals and allocations, the consolidation of the Jasper Apartment allocations under a singular program guidance and loan, and the associated budget amendments. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the particular projects, the program, or the work that's been undertaken by the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I may, you did, thank you for the loan. I had a question on the loan that was going to be given to Jasper and how, you know, thank you for all that, but the question is, is, I've got two questions, really. The total package to Jasper is one million, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-six. Eight hundred thousand, that's loan, and the other eighty-seven, is that a, is that a loan as well, or is that something different?
So it would all be issued as a singular loan?
Okay, so all that, one million, sixty-eight's a loan then, okay. All right, then, the thing is, though, is if you look at this proposal here, there's a lot of Evelyn charities, oh, can anybody apply for this, these loans or grants throughout the county? If a developer wanted to do an affordable housing project, could he or she apply for some of this, or?
So each program has its own eligibility requirements for construction. That is open to organizations, both nonprofit and for-profit entities. So an individual developer can certainly come in and request that as well, and we have historically awarded funding to private entities for affordable housing construction.
In Jasper, the Jasper project is a for-profit development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it says.
Well, I have no issue supporting all this, none whatsoever. The only thing that I would like to look at is, you know, our strategic plan says that older adults experience disproportionate impacts from community barriers such as affordable housing, and we've got all these projects that we're trying to provide affordable housing. But I really look forward to the time where we can have a plan and work on a plan that will allow our older citizens, as they get older, to be able to stay in the homes that they have lived in for some probably all their life. So I look, I look forward to being able to work on that plan so that we can make sure that not only we're building these houses for, but we get, let our citizens stay in the homes that they've lived in for a long time.
And I will say, as part of the application process, that all of the program applicants do have to indicate if any percent of their population will be served as elderly, if individuals with disabilities are being served, so they actually provide that information, and that will become part of the scope in a contract situation, so that we'll understand that they're anticipated to be delivering services to those targeted populations. A lot of our emergency repair program is focused on helping older adults stay in homes. Some of that includes ramp installation, roof repair, heating system repair. It really does enable particularly older adults to be able to stay in their housing as they continue to age in place.
Thank you.
Thanks for this presentation, and Commissioners Belcher and Edwards and Chairman Newman, thank you all for the hard work along with staff. This is really exciting. If it's not available tonight, that's fine, but I wondered if we could get a total for the amount of new funds being allocated plus the multi-year investments that we're making, just so we can kind of keep mental track of what in this fiscal year our funding commitment is around affordable housing?
Sure, so there are other funds that you're referencing, and I don't have all of those numbers right in front of me.
Yeah, that's, I didn't expect you to. I just wondered if, moving forward at some point.
Right, we can certainly provide that update to the commissioners, because there are other funds. For example, the East Haven Project is receiving an allocation this year that is not part of this allocation because it's a prior year award, but that funding is coming out of the current fiscal year, so those are certainly figures that we have available that aren't shown tonight.
Great, thanks, and this is really exciting. Step forward, thank you.
So just for the benefit of the board, there were, you know, numerous meetings throughout the year, and part of those meetings included, and I just want to thank the staff, if you knew the amount of work that they did in providing us accurate information that we could question and, you know, and, and it was multi-year, I mean, we received multi-year information, so we could see, you know, what we've been doing, what do we need to do, you know, how does this, you know, spread out over, over years, so it kind of, and once you see the multi-year information, you know, it kind of, kind of gives you the answer, are we being consistent, you know, and we're, and I think that's what we want to, want to try to be.
All right, any other questions or comments from Commissioners?
I just want to thank my colleagues, Commissioner Belcher and Chairman Newman. This has been a really terrific process, I think, to go through, and particularly to the staff, as we really did work through revamping the process and determining what our priorities were and how they align with the 2025 strategic plan, and the fact that we have the ability to monitor it this year, go back and continually improve it, I think is really important, and working towards making sure that we're lining it up with the overall county's budget process. I think we're a little behind the curve on this one, but moving forward, I do think there's some opportunity to make sure that we get those, those processes aligned, but I'm really excited about the impact that we're going to be making across Buncombe County, particularly in regards to your question, Commissioner Penland, with our aging population. That is definitely something that we looked at as part of this, and the staff makes sure that they're keeping that on their radar, but also importantly, because I think it ties in with our early childhood initiatives, is that we know when our children have warm, safe, quality homes to live in, they have better access to medical care, they have better access to educational opportunities and other health opportunities. So I'm really pleased to see how these two initiatives that we're also engaged in are really merging together at the right time in our community. And I'm also pleased that we do have funds set aside that we can continue to monitor to meet upcoming housing needs, as we don't know what the pandemic and the economic situation is coming forward at us, that we can address those as we need to. So thanks to the three of y'all and to the incredible staff. I'm really excited about this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, and I agree with what you both said. I think this has been a good process, and, you know, and I think that, you know, setting up these subcommittees, these working groups of the commission on early childhood education and affordable housing, I think it's really, I think it's paying off in terms of, you know, having time. I mean, this was a pretty in-depth conversation, but we've, we've really, you know, in the committee meetings, been able to spend a lot of time on each of those items, because it is a significant investment that's, that we're, we're considering. And so I think it's, I think, you know, I feel going into this process a lot more informed about a lot of these investments than on some of the other ways we've done it prior to the subcommittee being put together, and I feel good about the fact that the early childhood education funds are, that there's, although I'm not on it, that there's a group that does something similar there. So, and I think it'll continue to pay off even more in the future, you know, I think we've, we've spent a lot of time digging into some of the issues this year, and that'll, that'll make it even better going forward, because this, this affordable housing, housing challenge that we have is not going away. I think it is only going to increase as a challenge for us. I mean, part of, part of what I hear from folks, you know, who work in real estate is just that while parts of our economy are, you know, are having real challenges, I mean, people are moving to Buncombe County from all over the country, because Buncombe County is seen as, you know, a beautiful place to live, a safer place to live, and there's good that goes along with that, but it also is putting a lot of pressure on just regular people being able to afford a place to live, whether they're renting or trying to find a way to buy a home. So this challenge is going to be with us, and I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're, we've set up a good process to look at it this year and going forward. So is there a motion to approve the, the recommendations and budget amendment outlined in the staff report?
So, move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Okay, we now come to the item that we added to the agenda, which is consideration of a right-of-way item in the, on the Jacob Holm, Jacob Holm Way area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll tee it up before Max brings up, well, he's already brought it up, so I'll tee it up anyway. The road to nowhere out there in Inca goes across Hominy Creek. On the other side of the Inca development is Sand Hill Road and Inca Intermediate School. Jacob Holm Way currently exists from Sand Hill Road up to Walk Off Way and extends a half or three-quarters of a mile into that development. The plan is ultimately to connect that completed road with the bridge and have it all become a state-maintained road. As part of that process, what we're here for today concerns hurry-up requests from Hockon Industries, which is an economic development partner of ours, which needs the approvals of DOT and its utility providers for underground utilities so they can stay on construction schedule. What we see here in the lower middle of the, the screen shot is a two-hundred-and-thirty-three square-foot portion of already improved property. It has a sidewalk that ends right up there at that C-three Thai area, as shown on the map. Now, this is part of the greater Inca Intermediate School property. The county owns it for purposes of financing, twenty-two-point-six acres, and leases it back to Buncombe County Schools for the duration of the financing. The schools have sublet this particular northwest corner, or two acres of the extreme west of the site, to Inca Fire. Inca Fire is just now completing their fire station, a new substation on that site. So right before the meeting here, I got in contact and did get confirmation from the architect for Inca Fire that this does not impact their development, so what we're asking today is approval of a resolution to consent and declare this property essentially surplus and to allow it to be an easement right-of-way for secondary road purposes to go to DOT so that they can proceed to have this on their December calendar to accept into the secondary road system. I've already spoken with the school board as well, and they have no objection and will
Someone will make a motion to approve. I've got a comment, too. My understanding, I'd mentioned it before at a previous meeting, and confirmed that the, this is a, it's really a two-part construction, Jacob Holm Way, and then the connection from Jacob Holm Way over to the bridge, and all of that is to begin construction in the spring. And so I'm excited to be able to make a motion to, you know, clear the path for DOT to get started on it, so.
And I do, I do think a lot of this got bumped from the COVID-19 and then some funding issues out of DOT, but they're on schedule to kick off with that if I turn and look at Tim, but he's not here, but I think they're ready to go.
Yeah, they are. Fortunately, it didn't get, it didn't get bumped very far, so we're fortunate.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have board appointments?
So I'm going to recommend Rosa Rhea Villarreal for appointment to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to recommend John Gossett for appointment to the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Commissioners, I realize we didn't put this on the agenda, so this is a little out of order, but I wanted to just ask a question to the board, and if anybody wants to say, hey, Brownie, we didn't put this on the agenda, so I don't want to talk about it, I'll immediately stop it, I just want to ask this question. So a few Commissioners were talking about this before the meeting. We scheduled our next meeting for Wednesday, the day after the election, and I've just heard a few comments from some Commissioners that would, you know, would people be interested in moving it to maybe the day after that, just because I'm sure a lot of people are going to be, you know, working hard on Election Day, and probably a lot of us will be pretty, pretty tired, so is that something that Commissioners will be open to looking at Thursday instead of Wednesday, just to, just to give a day to kind of, you know, between the election and when we had our, have our next meeting? If it doesn't work for anybody, I mean, that's, it's on the calendar as it is now, but I just wanted to raise it as a, if that might be preferred by everyone.
So I just have a procedural question for Ms. Hockaday or whoever. Can, at this point in the meeting, if all of us agree, can we add this to it? Okay, I don't have any problem with the discussion then.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have a conflict with that, or Avril, are you aware of any reason that wouldn't work?
So.
We got an email that we were going to do some interviews on the fourth.
Yeah, there's.
We do already have some things I think we're going to have to do the day after the, you know, that are kind of already on the books, so.
Is Rachel?
We're probably, need to keep that, but it would be the difference between kind of like some interviews on Zoom versus kind of day-long meetings, you know?
I mean, I'd like to move it all. If we're going to move it, move it all.
Well, let's, does anybody object to the commission meetings being on Thursday?
Because Zooms are brutal, or bruteler? Is that a word? That is not a word, I apologize. Everybody understands what I'm trying to say, though. I mean, yeah. It's not going to be a rest having a Zoom meeting on the fourth, is all I'm saying.
Okay, well, we can look at that, too, but let's, let's start with it. Does any, any objection to the commission meetings being on Thursday instead of Wednesday?
I don't have.
I thought I had a conflict, but it's in the morning, so I'm probably, yeah.
Okay, do we need to procedurally make a motion to adjust it, or can we just by consensus?
I think to add it to the agenda than to make the change.
And we need to have a commission briefing and a regular meeting on that, whichever day we are on?
Thursday, what's that, the fifth?
I do not recall what's on the briefing agenda, but.
It's on the schedule.
If we're meeting, sir, we can move things around, just, yeah, we don't have to have a brief, and we can always move things around.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move the meetings, the county commission meetings from the.
Fourth.
From the fourth to the fifth. The regular meeting will be at 5:00 PM. The regular meeting will be at 5:00 PM. If we have a briefing meeting, it will be at 3:00 PM, and we'll ask the staff to look at that. If there's not a, you know, a need for it, then, then they could, they could choose to not have that, but if we do have one, it'll be at 3:00 PM, and the regular meeting will be at 5:00.
And I'm going to second that motion as long as everything else can be moved to that date or, or canceled.
Okay.
We don't need two days.
Mr. Joyner, about that, so we've got, we've got the, how many appointments on strategic partnerships are there?
This is only for one position because there was a resignation, and so we are wanting somebody to build that interim position, or that interim term.
Sure, we can move that.
And I'm.
And if we may, I think they were given to be in here and in person, there are only three people.
Okay.
And I have one concern, too, on that appointment. That was the only minority on that committee, and if, with him resigning, we have no diversity on that committee, and that's a key committee that it should be on, because they're giving funds to the entire community. Everybody should be represented on the community, committee.
How many applicants do we have?
It's only three applicants.
Okay, are any of them minority candidates?
I don't think so, but I'll have to do a check on that.
Could you, if you might just look, if you could look real quick while we're talking about it, because if we don't, I agree, I think we should continue advertising.
Yeah, we should advertise. You'll just have to not interview that date, then.
Yeah.
If you want to extend it out.
Mr. Free?
Mr. Joyner did point out that we set a regular meeting schedule by resolution not too long ago pursuant to statute, and we'll do it again in December. So it, I think with that in mind, it might be easier and cleaner just to cancel the meeting if that's the desire of the board of the fourth, and just hold a special meeting the next day, and we'll post it accordingly.
Okay.
So you'll have to change your motion.
Okay, so the motion is to cancel the meeting on the fourth, to have it, and to hold a special meeting on the fifth?
Hold a special meeting on the fifth, okay.
Second.
Okay, so I'm, I've, I made that motion, and I think Mr. Belcher just seconded it. All right.
All right.
And if.
We're going to have to extend that, and we can probably go ahead and vote, and we're going to have to, that's.
Let's go ahead.
Because I'd said that we need to take the meetings that we had for that, for the fourth, and reschedule them anyhow, Commissioner White, so if you, you know, if you want to, and I don't have a problem with it, if you want to extend it, and I would think that we would, it would, it would, it'd be good if we could get multiple.
Right, sure. I agree.
Applying.
All right, let's, it sounds like there's an interest in extending and inviting additional applications for the strategic partnership. Does anybody object to that?
No.
I know it's a, okay, so I don't think we have to vote on that, that's just a board and commission, and it's less formal than our meetings. So all in favor of the motion to cancel the meeting on the fourth and to add a special meeting on the fifth? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all for accommodating that. It's an idea that kind of just came up literally right before this meeting, so I just didn't have a chance to, didn't think about it at the beginning of the meeting. All right, we do have a need for a closed session. Ms. Hockaday, could you tell us what the purpose is?
Mike, Mike.
We need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a4 to discuss an economic development matter.
So moved. Second. There's a motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We do not anticipate taking any action on this matter this evening, and when the commission returns from closed session, we will take no additional business except to adjourn the meeting. All right, thank you. This meeting's adjourned, we're now in closed session.